On Tammy, Brian, it looks like.
We're just missing Tammy?
Yeah.
Send her a quick note. Text or whatever. Do you have her cell number?
I sent her an email a couple hours ago, so she should have everything.
Okay. So who do we have on right now?
Everybody except for Tammy.
Okay.
Brian, can you send her the invite again, just so, just in case?
Hey, I'm inviting all of you to chocolate tips, okay?
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Tammy's here.
Ryan, you can't hear you very well.
Everyone's here.
You got your volume up?
Yeah, I don't know what it is. Something wrong with my laptop.
Ever since I complimented you, you've gone downhill, just so you know.
There we go.
All right, the planning commission today, September 1st, will come to order. Roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Backsendale?
Present.
Mr. Lesko? He's there, but he's turned around. I'll skip, I'll come back to him. Mr. Meglio?
Here.
Ms. Shockley? Tammy, can you hear me? All right. Mr. Muschak, I see you there. Ms. Peniston?
Here.
Ms. Langallis? Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Okay, and we also, on my screen, I do see Ms. Shockley and Mr. Lesko, I believe, is there with his back to us. If they're, not sure if they have audio problems or not.
I'll text them.
Okay.
Okay, we see Tam. All right, now we see Tam.
Howdy.
Thanks for turning around, John.
You there?
All right, so everybody can hear, we can see everybody?
Yeah, muted.
John, can you hear us?
All right, so now I'm having trouble with my computer.
So John's having trouble with his computer? Steve can't hear you.
I muted him, just in case. Since he's not aware that he's talking, so I'll, I'll shoot him an email, that way he knows when he's back.
He just said he can't hear us, so he's having a problem with his audio, I think.
Okay. John, can you hear us?
He's on mute. I see the, the red, but the microphone is red muted.
Now he's gone.
Wow, still can't hear anybody. Oh, you can hear me? I can't hear you. Hey, Steve, I can't hear you. Looking at this.
Tamara, can you, Tamara, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
But the only issue is John?
Yeah, I know, sorry. I have to figure out how to get you guys.
So, so John, John can I hear us, but we could hear him?
He's on mute.
Brian, can you send John a text or an email to tell, maybe his audio is off?
Mike, I just did, Mike, I told him that we could hear him, but he can't hear us.
Oh, thanks. Sometimes the audio, you mute your audio speakers, and, you know, that happens to me, and I forget, so.
Yeah, well, on my screen here, I see John's microphone, it's red muted.
Not anymore, he's, he's not.
Okay.
Well, do you want to get moving either way?
Yeah, we're gonna get moving. Okay, so we have two items on the agenda. We have discussion on North 7 and the East Norwalk TOD. Now, is Mr. Waters on?
I am, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start with North 7. Mr. Waters is going to update us on, on things, and I'm assuming you have some PowerPoint charts to show us?
I do, Madam Chairman, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, thank you again, for the record, David Waters, General Counsel of the Building and Land Technology. And the things that I'd like to go over tonight, very briefly, are some sections and some perspectives and modeling that we've submitted to the zoning commission. While the specifics of the master plan that we proposed aren't really in front of the planning commission on a referral basis, the zone change and the text amendment that would allow for the master plan are, so we thought that it would be helpful to you to see what the ramifications of granting the zone change and the text amendment would be. And so, if you don't mind, I will share my screen. And this is a series of sections that we have provided, and they're online and available through your website. But it shows you what the ramifications are. So the first piece, this building 1.1 in this area is an 11-story building, which would be permitted by the change to executive office zone from business number 2. The two sections that are going to be demonstrated on the following page are what you see here at 1A and what you see here at 1B. So it will run through and show you how it relates to this building at Merit 7, as well as the buildings that are up the hill. And what you can see, this is the Merit 7 Plaza, so this is the 1A section. This is the 1B section. You see, this is at the five stories, this is at the 11 stories, with the garage behind it. What's interesting is that, as you can see, the Glover Avenue area is actually a valley between the buildings at Merit 7 and the height that you get as it goes up the hill to the west. So, and actually, if you were to take 501 and place it right here, which it does actually do, we, the way that we did the section was to show you at the, at the plaza level, but if we had done that section right over here, so that it ran through the building, what you would see is that Merit 7 and the 11-story building that is here are both essentially exactly the same height. The next section that we did is through the 11-story building that is at 2.1 and at the 14-story proposed building at 2.2. And what you see again with 2.1 is that the height of the 11-story building is virtually the same as what you see at 301 Merit 7. It's, I think it's about five feet taller here than it is at the top of the penthouse for 301. The interesting thing about 2.2, the 14-story building, is that, in addition to the fact that there's nothing to the west of it, is the fact that you have this property, this knoll, that exists between the Route 7 Expressway and Glover Avenue. So visually, and you'll see this in a minute when we get to the modeling, visually, from Route 7, even if there was no landscaping, trees, or other obstructions available, and it was just the land itself, from Route 7 going this way, you would not see the building at all. The last of the sections is at the very north end of the property, the two 15-story buildings, one at 3.1 and one at 3.2. In this case, the section we did has a jog in it, just so that you do get Grist Mill Building B into the picture, because otherwise it would go straight through and there would be nothing there. But to give you that perspective, so again, what you have is, you have 101 Merit 7, you have the Grist Mill apartments, and then you have 3.1, 3.2. Most of what you see on Glover is lower than what you would see for Grist Mill, so if you've experienced driving along Grist Mill and it's, or Glover Avenue and have seen the curb, it will be lower actually on the left-hand side as you're traveling north than what you see on the right-hand side. The taller part of the buildings are set back closer to the Route 7 Expressway, where there is no impact on adjoining properties. So that's the, that is the, that gives you the sections through each of the areas of the site. This again is the master plan as we proposed it. And what we then did was, in addition to the sections, we suggest, we asked our consultants to put together modeling that would show what would this really look like? And this again has been submitted, it is on your website, or on the city's website, and is, shows various perspectives from various different directions. And what we wanted to do was, we wanted to show, what would this look like from various directions? So you'll see that there are numbers that are here, and as you go through it yourself, you'll be able to follow, but it shows you where those perspectives are being taken from. You'll also see, the second page of that package shows you a Google Earth picture that we've now superimposed those various perspectives from as well. The important thing about this is, it shows you that there are areas where there are significant vegetation that are not controlled, obviously, by the applicant, but are important because of what they do and how they affect the views that you would otherwise see. The one thing that you won't see is any perspectives or modeling that is taken from Main Avenue, other than up at the northern end, up here. And the reason for that is because all of the Merit 7 buildings effectively block any of the improvements that you would make, that you would see otherwise behind them on Glover Avenue. So with that, the first perspective that you see is taken from the Route 7 Expressway, you would be traveling south down. And what you see here is the northernmost of the buildings, 3.2, and the building immediately behind it, 3.1, followed by 2.3. These are both proposed as 15-story buildings. This is a 14-story building. What you, to give you a frame of reference, what we've done is, we've actually put this orange dotted line, which is the 11-story height that would be otherwise permitted right now in the executive office zone. So it gives you an idea of what the difference is between what we've requested and what is currently permitted. That will be important, and you'll see that when we get to the very end, because again, what we've proposed is somewhat higher height in exchange for a narrower footprint. So keep that in mind as you see this. The next one is taken from the intersection of Glover Avenue, which you see over here to the left, and Grist Mill, which is right in front of you. And what you see, based upon the existing vegetation that is in, at the northern end of the property, which is actually on the DOT property, is this is the, that front nose of building 3.2, 15 stories tall. What you see behind is 3.1, and then back here, which you don't see at all, but we shaded it in, is again 2.2, which is the 14-story building. This is again taken from the expressway. This one is actually looking north. And what you see at the very northern end of the site, these are 3.2 and 3.1. This is 2.2. And this is 2.1, which is that 11-story building, that's kind of the C-shaped building. And then very, way down at this end is 1.2. What you'll note is that, again, because of that knoll and because of the existing vegetation, nothing is seen. This is taken, again, from the expressway. And what you're seeing here, this is 2.3, 14 stories, 2.2, also 14 stories, and 2.1. The darker areas that you see are existing buildings that are to the west. So these are the residential buildings that are to the west of our master plan, and are between us and the expressway. This is a perspective that is taken from Main Avenue, and basically, what you're looking at here, this is the garage plaza level of Merit 7 Building 1.1. What's not shown here, actually, which exists, is the gas station that has now been inserted in the Sinclair Station. The other piece that, about this that you should know is that what you see with these lines, the white lines, is not all of the master plan. In fact, this rectangle right here is building Building B of the curb, and this is Building A of the curb. So all you're really seeing of the master plan buildings is this piece and these pieces up here, which is 3.2 and 3.1. This perspective is taken from the flybridge that comes from Main Avenue, comes just to the south of 399 Main Avenue, and then goes over to the Towers buildings. So what you're looking at is Glover Avenue going north. This is Building 1.1, the 11-story building. It then drops down, and you can really not see where it is, but the five-story buildings are down in this location. What you're seeing is 2.2, or 2.1 and 2.3 up at the, up at the other end of things. So what's important about this is that the, the height of these buildings, the 399 Main Avenue and the Merit 7 buildings, is really equivalent to what's being proposed on this side of Glover, which is the 11 stories and then going up the hill. This is a perspective that is taken from Glover Avenue, again, looking north. It's right before you get to that area of the square and the train station, which we've now superimposed in here. This one obviously is more of a modeled perspective, because none of these improvements currently exist, other than what you see over at the Merit 7 buildings. So this is, to give you perspective, this is Building 1.1 and 1.1B, which is the five-story building. Then you've got the square, then you've got 1.2, which is also five stories on the other side of the square. What's important to note is that they are not that much taller than what is designed for the train station. But they're certainly lower than what is existing at Merit 7. Incidentally, just as an update on the train station, the train station, the contract has been awarded, construction is commencing. It's, in fact, they're, they're preparing the laydown area right now. And it will be completed, the target for completion is the first quarter of 2022, so it's about an 18-month project. But it is definitely ongoing, it's fully funded, and it is being constructed, which is great news. The last of the perspectives, which is actually in some ways the most interesting to me, this is looking south on Glover Avenue from what you see over here is Building A of the curb. So this is right before the curb occurs in Glover Avenue. And what you see here are buildings 2.3, which is 14 stories, and Building 2.2, which is also 14 stories. And it gives you the opportunity to really look at what the alternative is that we've proposed. By doing a 14-story building instead of an 11-story building, what you end up with is those taller but narrower buildings. If instead, we had done the, what we suggested could be an alternative, and we've submitted this, this is also on your website, this is 2.2 and 2.3, as 11-story buildings, which is what would be currently permitted. If you were looking down that same perspective, you would not see the same open space between those buildings, because you've now made them lower by three stories, but they have a larger footprint. So these have now been extended, these, these Ls have now been extended. So if you go back to this, this L, this part of the building would now be extended down to about here. And this L would be extended to about here. So instead of the open space that you see between these buildings, you would now see a much larger blockage of view for that. The same is also true, just as you're driving down from the buildings that we had talked about at 3.1 and 3.2, which are proposed at 15 stories rather than 11 stories, because again, what had been shown as the alternatives would show in, that you again have 11 stories, but now you're blocking views that would otherwise be available through these directions too. So that's the rationale, in our mind, for having a somewhat higher building, but allowing for a smaller footprint in each case. And the fact is that because of where these buildings are located, they do not have an impact to the same degree that you would have, for example, if it was down in these areas. So that kind of gives you the perspectives that, that we had talked about, and that is the rationale behind the height differential that we've proposed. So that being said, the only other thing that I wanted to bring you up to date on is a couple of housekeeping matters. One of them is that the regulations we've been working on with your staff, there are a couple of things that I know had been of significant interest to you and to the zoning commission. One of them was, we have agreed as part of our regulations that not less than 20% of the entire site, and let me go back to the, to the real site plan in this case, not less than 20% of the entire site would be available as open space, open to the public. So your regulations currently require that 30% of all of the property within the executive office zone must be open space, as in not being covered by buildings or parking areas. Not, we still comply with, obviously, but of the 30% that is open space, two-thirds of that will be open to the public. So that is all of the areas that are in this area, this area, this area here, potentially, which is not counted, but is part of our, but is proposed as an access. This area here, it also includes the plazas and the front areas around here, and a plaza that is in this direction here. So we think that that's a significant piece of of the design of all of this, which you don't have in any other zone in Norwalk, that 20% of the site must be open to the public. The other thing that we have agreed with your staff on is that one of the criteria that will be within the regulations is that all buildings must provide either green roofs, blue roofs, contain solar panels, or be solar-ready for any portion of the roof that isn't being used for recreation area and improvement. So what that means is that areas like here, which probably would have a pool or other hardscaping or landscaping that is for, for the benefit of the tenants, if it is not used for that, it must be either a green roof or a blue roof or solar-ready. So it's more likely these areas would be the green roof, blue roof, solar-ready. These would probably be areas that will be amenity space, some of which will be green, because it will be landscaped as well. But we've made that commitment, that any area that is not part of the amenity space will be eco-friendly in those respects. We're still working with staff on other criteria that will be implemented, as far as design is concerned, as far as eco-friendly. But these are the things that we would update you on today. Second thing that, just as an update on, I know that the commission had, and also the zoning commission, had had some questions had had some questions about the economic analysis that we had provided and submitted to you from Goman and York. We have taken those questions and submitted them to Goman and York. And they have provided a written response. That response is also available on the PMZ website. The other thing that was also asked recently by the zoning commission was, is there any change that we expect would occur in the Goman and York report as a result of COVID-19? Because it was originally created prior to the pandemic. And the answer is that we have posed that to Goman and York. They were, Dr. Poland was available to the zoning commission at their last meeting. And he has agreed to provide an update, which we expect that will be submitted to your staff tomorrow, if not tomorrow, the next day. That will update, and just as a sneak preview, basically what they say is that they expect that there will be some minor changes in things, but not anything of significance. In fact, if anything, it probably is, what they expect is that there will be, for example, a reduction. They think that the the analysis of the number of schoolchildren is probably reduced, not only in this master plan area, but throughout Norwalk as a result of the pandemic. They also think that, in other words, they think that the birth rate will go down and that that will mean that five to seven years from now, there will be less of an impact than is currently contemplated on schoolchildren just from births to date. Similarly, they also will respond to question of office use and residential use and demand as well. So sneak preview, you can expect that that will be provided. And I expect that we will have that to your staff so that it can be uploaded to the website tomorrow or the next day. So with that, I think that my updates are complete, but happy to discuss anything that people have for us.
Any commissioners want to jump in?
I have a question. This is Tamara Shockley.
Yes, Commissioner.
I am not seeing substantial green space. What activities or recreation activities are you offering on this green space? Is it just grass and benches? What are you offering to the residents of this community?
Right, so the, what you don't see is any of the details as far as the green space is concerned because this is the map, the overall master plan. As we had indicated, once the master plan is approved, then each of the buildings with their surrounding areas will need to be submitted for site plan review to the zoning commission. And at that point, the full details of what is proposed for these spaces will be fully developed. What I can tell you is that the areas here will be a plaza. The area along here, which is where there will be some retail as well, also has wider sidewalks and green space and benches and what have you. This is a public square that will allow for things like farmers' markets, food trucks, entertainment, things of that of that nature. Similarly, this area, again, will, we hope, have an access that will allow for access up to the residential area that is above. But it also includes an area that is green space below that will be fully landscaped and available. This is almost like a public park. We expect that there will be activities that are available here, that there will be landscaping, that there may be other types of improvements that are more active and some that will be passive. This area here is the raccoon brook runs up through this area. So a portion of that is passive because it's the upland areas that are limited as to what can be done. But the areas that are in this area, for example, and the areas that are here, which will all be tied together with this public park, I expect that there will be areas that are used for active recreation as well as for passive recreation as well. But all of that will be fully developed as part of the overall plan. Just as these are block buildings, they don't show all of the thing that you would typically see as part of the architecture as well.
Another question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Please go ahead.
Another question. Are you marketing to people who are working in Merit 7? Or are you also marketing to people with families?
Both, I would say. I would say that the number of units that are contemplated to be multi-bedroom, like three-bedroom, are relatively limited. There are a fair number of two-bedroom units, so that that would certainly cater to families, or small families at least. We certainly are catering to and promoting to Merit 7 and the Towers at the southern end of Glover Avenue because we think that that is a net occupancy. But we're certainly including others as well. And again, as is required by the regulations, 10% of all of the units will be affordable housing units, workforce housing units.
All right. Fran?
Okay.
No, Tamara, or you got more?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, Mary, I think I heard your voice.
Yes, I have three questions. Number one, with the change that you are requesting, does it change the total number of units? And could you remind us what the total number of units is?
It does change the total number of units. What is permitted currently, I don't have off the top of my head. And it would take a bit of calculation because some of the property is currently zoned executive office. So what we're proposing for those areas would certainly, the density wouldn't change. A portion of the area, notably the area that is right over here, not the, this area here is executive office currently. This area in the back is currently AAA residence zone because it was part of an overall zone change that was done to take all of what had been DOT property, which was unzoned. So theoretically, you could put whatever you wanted on it at whatever density you wanted. But the city elected to make all of the Route 7 expressway DOT property, AAA residence zone, just to protect it so it could be determined what was the appropriate zoning for it. So that area currently, you would have as one-acre, single-family residential zone. The area that is from about here down is currently business number two zone. So we can certainly provide you with the calculations as to what would be the maximum density that would be permitted based upon all three of those zones currently. The total that you're proposing is a total of 1,300 units.
And you said it would increase with these changes that you're proposing?
Yes, the the area that is currently single-family AAA residence zone, where it's one house per acre of land, and there's about, I think it's about three acres that is, or two and a half acres that is up here. Obviously, it changes from two units, one per acre, to something significantly larger because of the executive office zone that is here. The area that is down here in the business two zone, you're increasing it from the business two density, which I remember exactly offhand what that is. But it would be going up to what is permitted in the executive office zone under a commercial plan residential development.
So I'm sorry for being a bit simplistic, but could you give me hard numbers? The first proposal that you all made with the lower height in buildings, could you say overall for the projects, how many units that was? And with the proposal that we're looking today for greater height, how many units will that be?
They're the same, 1,300. It's just a question of whether you design it in such a way that it is 11 stories tall and therefore wider buildings, or whether it's taller buildings or narrower.
My second question is, could you say what the overall density is per square mile with what you're proposing? And if there is any other area in Norwalk that has similar density?
I can certainly do that. We can do the numbers and submit that to you. And the density per square foot are and any other areas there, same or greater? Yep. Yes, we can get that back to you. We'll reply back to staff and I'm sure that they'll be happy to circulate that to you.
So Fran, if we don't have answer to these questions, are we still going to have to take a vote on this today?
No, we're not voting. This is an update. And then we have a joint, joint public hearing with zoning.
Thank you.
Coming up, okay? So.
All right, forgot about that. Thank you.
Yep. Do you have a third question or is that number three?
Uh, that'll do for now, thank you.
All right.
Steve, when is the public hearing? You have a date yet or not yet?
I don't, simply because the next meeting with the zoning commission is the 16th. And there are a couple of outstanding items that need to get solidified between now and that point. And one of them I may have an answer for next week, but I don't have a firm date yet. Probably not before the end of September at the earliest.
Okay, so the path is today we're being updated, we're asking questions. Then we have the joint public hearing with zoning.
Fran, I remembered my third question. I'm so sorry. May I ask my third question? Thank you. My third question was, when you were talking about the economic impact, you emphasized about the school population. You also mentioned something about COVID. But I'm curious, will you have specific comments regarding the trends that are happening with office buildings? Since there seems to be a trend that people are going to downsize in terms of office space? And if you have all, if you will be considering that in the comments that you'll be adding when you look at the impact of COVID-19 and how that affects both the Towers and your project?
Yes, that is a part of Dr. Poland's analysis that we'll be providing.
Thank you, thank you, Fran.
Yep. Anybody want to go next?
Fran?
Yep.
Matt, thank you. Mr. Waters, you talked about.
Tamara, we can't hear you. Hello? Are we still on? Everybody can, anybody can hear me?
Yeah. Maybe just put out.
Hook it out.
Tammy.
Tammy Langgallis or Tamara?
Yeah, Tammy Langgallis.
Well, I'll ask my question then. I'll ask my question.
Go ahead, Steve.
Good evening. Are all of these parcels in question, are they already purchased already by by the applicant already? So that there's no other changes?
Yes, that's correct. All of the property that is proposed for the master plan are owned by our.
The applicant.
By the app.
Thank you.
Hi, Fran, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the technical difficulties. You were speaking about the 20% of the open space, or 20% of the land is open to the public?
Yes.
And I'm a little confused by that. So retail space is always open to the public. If it's office space and it's a plaza, is that open to the public anyway? So what do you mean? Could you clarify that a little bit more, please?
Sure, so typically, if you have retail, yes, the space in front of it is open to the public. What we're proposing for things like the square, for example, is an open public forum area, just kind of a typical New England area that you would not necessarily see if it was buildings that were business number two buildings. So for example, if you if you think about what you would have along Main Avenue, the hotels that are there, those, the open space that is in front of those hotels is not open to the public. But what we're proposing among things with the square, with the park areas, the green spaces, all of those are open to the public in a way that is not required anyplace else. The only thing that I can recollect from the Norwalk zoning regulations where there is a requirement for public access is along the water.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mike Mushak, haven't heard from you.
Now I'll go back if nobody else. I'm really curious about the numbers that you had saying that you think the school population is going to actually be reduced. With so many people working from home, I would think that the birth rate is going to go up and not down. And it's a big concern for the Norwalk schools that are already at capacity. And even if half of these units had one kid in them, that would be, you know, at least 600 more children in the Norwalk school system.
I will tell you that I, that Dr. Poland is the one that I would speak with, and he will certainly be available and will be available at the public hearing. But he has a professional opinion about this. The one thing I can tell you absolutely is that the concept of, you know, half of the units having a school child is just not borne out, in fact, not based upon the buildings that are currently in existence at the curb, buildings A and B, or One Glover Avenue, or 399 Main Avenue. And I would submit that none of the buildings of similar nature that are in Norwalk have that kind of a population of schoolchildren.
Thank you.
Mike Mushak, are you there?
Yes.
I said I haven't. Go ahead, we haven't heard from you, so I'm just checking in.
No, everybody was asking very good questions. And so I think the, any questions I had were all answered. I will say one thing, though, that as a landscape architect, the exposure of more sky from public spaces and from the street with the narrowing and heightening of buildings, I think that's a good trade-off. Certainly having more views out, through the buildings is better. This did happen at, just so for frame of reference, Head of the Harbor, the residential building on Wall Street. The Mill Hill views were important. And the Historical Commission was very concerned. And they split the buildings in two so that there was a view through the buildings. And they got a little taller, but they were less of a mass. So this concept is not new to Norwalk. But I think it's something I would support.
Okay. Brian, you have anything? Back to Neil.
Reasonably comfortable with what we've heard so far. Very, very interested in the next phase, which is the design phase in particular on the buildings. That's where my interest will be. And also hearing, of course, what the population demographics are thought to be with the implications to the rest of the city. Yes, that would be very interesting. That's my interest, but I'm comfortable with the moment. Very nice presentation. Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Yes, thank you, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, John last, is John on?
I'm on. Thank you, Fran. I think I've finally figured out my problems here. And yeah. And yeah, I, my, my preference is the 11-story units, although I can't see the beauty of the 14-story units. I think the placement is perfect. I think that utilizing the Danbury Line is really a great opportunity. It's certainly not utilized enough, and I'd really like to see it used more so it doesn't shut down or there's any, any chance of it shutting down. I think the placement is very nice, and it works well with the Merritt Seven. So, you know, I, I like what we're being proposed here. I'm sorry, I was very silent, very quiet, just trying to get, I ended up switching computers. I don't know if you saw, but ended up switching computers, and now I can hear and I can vocalize. So thank you. Well, well done, Steve. I missed a little bit of the presentation, but David, I'm sorry, David, I, I think that the presentation was done very well and that the layout of the structures are very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Waters, a very nice presentation, especially using real pictures, you know, of the not squashed computer, you know, made it. But I had that conversation with Mr. Kleppin this afternoon, how when those types of renderings come in, they should be rejected when they don't true, they don't show things as they are. So if you don't mind going over again, I know you mentioned, and you've talked about it before, the proposal for the whole master plan being accepted as a master plan and not broken up into pieces. So if you can just go through that a little bit again, so it's fresh in everybody's mind as to approving, accepting, whatever the word we want to use, as, as the master plan. Because if it's broken up, various things can happen.
Sure, I'd be happy to refresh everybody's recollection that, that basically the concept of the master plan is that it allows everybody to understand what you're going to get in the way of bulk, in the way of uses. It means that the city can then understand and rely upon the fact that it's not a bait and switch that a simple zone change would be to, would then allow whatever is permitted within that zone. By doing a master plan, it locks everybody into an understanding that unless further approval is received from the zoning commission, it, it has to look like that, at least as far as the types of uses and locations and bulk of buildings. What's helpful to the developer, to the property owner, is that they also have that same understanding. It means that as we work through design standards with staff, that everybody is on the same page as far as a unified approach to the development so that it's consistent, so it becomes something that really does become, and this is a unique area, but it becomes a real community and an integrated community between Merritt Seven, the existing buildings that are on Glover Avenue, the properties that are on the hill, so that it becomes its own community, which it currently is from a physical standpoint. It just isn't tied together at this point. So what happens by doing the master plan is that that master plan, once approved, would be recorded on the land records. It would then establish what, in each case, the properties need to address and how they need to be designed so that it is in fact a truly planned development. And each of the individual improvements, the individual buildings, would still need to come back to the zoning commission for site plan review, which would require at that point not only the usual six standards of dealing with things like traffic and utilities and landscaping and what have you, but it would also require a finding that, of the zoning commission, that what's being proposed does in fact comply with the master plan that's been approved. So it gives everybody a sense of certainty as to what they can expect, how they can expect it to be done. And it imposes standards that frankly would not be imposed if it was just done by zone change, where you would just have piecemeal development and some, maybe it's integrated and maybe it's not.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else says, do you have any questions for Mr. Waters?
I do. This is Tamara Shockley.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to say, I do have some problems and concern with the density of population. I don't think one can predict, predict what the population will be due to COVID. I do see if you are going to be offering this residence to families, there is going to be an increase in school population. But my main concern is I don't see a community, and I don't see buildings making a community. So I want to know what are your plans to turn these buildings into a community for Norwalk, which would include families and young adults, places where there's recreation for them, open green space, other, just other facilities where this can become a community and not just five new building, new rental buildings for Norwalk.
Sure. So again, you know, the full design of all of these things, hang on just a second, my light went out. The full design of all of these is, has yet to be developed in its entirety. But the reality is, again, we're not talking just about these buildings. We're talking about creating a community that ties in Merritt Seven and the office workers at Merritt Seven so that they can come across and become part of this as well. So the retail, again, is designed to be community retail. It's not destination retail. It's not Costco or any of those, or Walmart. It's talking about, you know, your coffee shop, your, your dry cleaner drop off, your bank branch, the types of things that create an amenity for the people that are there, whether it's the office buildings and the people that come across from the office buildings, whether it's the people that are up the hill who currently don't have any of those amenities within walking distance at all. And then creating the walking trails. And we've shown, and you can see it on the master plan, that it's not, that you've got the extension of the Norwalk River Valley Trail that lends its way down to the train station, this stub. You have the additional walking trails that we're proposing that are on our property or on DOT property that come up to Oakwood, so that people will be able to walk through the neighborhood where currently they can't. It's this, this area, it's a very compact area, but it's also an area that is striated between the area that's up the hill, the area that's down on Glover Avenue, and the area that's across the train tracks and the Norwalk River. So the concept of a community, of a neighborhood, is to tie all of that together by, among other things, the ability to walk through areas that currently can't be walked through. The actual amenities that will be designed, and we've been doing this down here in Stanford at Harbor Point, we, we've hired people to actually create the interest and the activities that can occur. So it's things like yoga classes outside. It's things like farmer's market and what have you, that we actually do something in the neighborhood of 100 events a year down in the Harbor Point area, all of which are not limited to the residents of Harbor Point. They are open to the public in general. And that's the same concept that we've got here.
Yes, I do have a question. You mentioned the word amenities in, in the relation to Harbor Point. I look at the word amenity, and I look at small businesses dying on Main Avenue due to this development. A lot of inclusive thought with this community. You mentioned yoga, you mentioned farmer's markets and such, such things like that. I have seen and participated and attended many of those events in Harbor Point. And I, I kind of feel, well, I, I am feeling that a lot of these businesses along Main Avenue would, would be suffocated due to this development. And I think you're switching the lives of these small business owners to amenities in a proposed building. So I just want to just make sure that, that we understand that an amenity is not something that's going to sustain your life. It's just an added thing. Fairway Market just went out in Harbor Point. There's food needs, there's going to be more food needs in that corridor. And the next meeting, I'm looking for more detailed things that BLT is looking to do to not just create an inclusive community, but able to spread out the resources to the neighboring residential homes along, you know, the area.
Well, with respect, I would say that the, the concept of having 1,300 additional units with people that are consuming things that are now going to be within walking distance of Main Avenue actually supports the recall that's on Main Avenue rather than detracts from it. I think that as the, when the train station is built, it will allow people to not only come across from Merritt Seven to Glover Avenue, but it'll also allow people to go from Glover Avenue across to Main Avenue through Merritt Seven.
Well, that's a hard, have, have you ever walked across that street during the daytime or evening time?
Main Avenue? No question. And I have, yes.
Okay. And you know how difficult that is, right? There's, there's only four crosswalks between those five buildings. And out of those crosswalks, there's two next to stoplights. And it's very challenging, especially the 456 Main Avenue Plaza.
Yeah. And, and I am certain that that will be one of the things that will be part of what is addressed if there's further demand. I mean, part of the thing that's going to happen with this, with the train station, among other things, is that there is going to be greater pedestrian traffic, especially in that specific area where the plaza is and the train station is. And I suspect that what will result from that is the DOT will, based upon pedestrian demand, will then be able to adjust some of the timing and some of the improvements that are there, too.
Don't, don't get me wrong, Mr. Waters, I'm all for enhancements and improvements, just inclusive, inclusive work with the neighboring businesses.
Yeah.
You know, to support a collaborative kind of approach. I'm looking forward to a collaboration between existing and proposed.
No, absolutely. And, and Mr. Ferguson, one of the things that I would suggest is, if you haven't already, we have a website that we've already started for North Seven. It's www.north-seven.com. And if you look at it even today, we're already promoting things that are in the area. So the concept here is not just to promote BLT and BLT buildings, but to also promote the area and actually to promote Norwalk as a whole. And that is what we've been doing with Harbor Point Development as well. But we fully expect that the concept of being able to promote local businesses, you know, Tavernon Seven, for example, or other businesses that are nearby that, that the people that are in the neighborhood may be able to find advantageous. That, the whole concept here is to make it into a truly good environment. And the way to do that is to promote the things that are there, not just the things that we're proposing to build. I absolutely agree with you on that.
You know, since you mentioned it, how many bridges could go over the railroad tracks from Glover to Main Avenue?
You know, that's, it's a good question. I know that when we did the fly bridge to the towers a while ago, it took quite a while to get that approved because they don't like, it was interesting because not only did we have to get approval from Metro North, but we also had to get approval from the city to have a bridge going over, a private bridge going over a public street. Is it possible? Yes, obviously it is, because we've seen that that is in fact what we did with the fly bridge. Is it possible to do in other locations? I suspect it may be, yes.
Yeah, it's going to be a good idea to at least have one or two, because we don't want the same thing happen to Wall Street or curb that happened on Washington Street, to have a connection from a thoroughfare like this new development to existing businesses. It would be a nice collaboration thought process.
Absolutely.
And project.
And Mr. Waters, are you communicating with DOT? Or is there any, is there a collaboration? You're keeping them informed? I don't know, any collaboration with DOT regarding this?
No question, Madam Chairman. The, we are in quite a bit of contact with DOT. They have, as you know, projects that they are contemplating, both at the north end of the expressway where, where Grist Mill is, as well as the interchange project with the Merritt, with the Merritt Parkway and what have you. And we're very much involved in, in keeping an eye on that and in being, discussing it with them and what are the possibilities and what are the ramifications. Frankly, there's not much that we would be able to develop of this master plan until we can also address stable traffic flow as defined in your regulations. But also, this is a major traffic generator under OSTA. And so therefore, it's going to require DOT approval as well. So we would not be going through all of this effort and, and making the proposals that we're making if we were not confident that we would be able to deal with the traffic and the traffic improvements that need to be made, because otherwise it's just pretty pictures. We would not be able to get anything approved either locally or on the state level until we can also address traffic.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I want to just emphasize that in any of your dealings with the DOT, obviously there's, you know, this is going to have a big impact on Main Avenue from the Motor Vehicle North and Grist Mill. And, you know, Grist Mill is just a crime against nature because there's no sidewalks. And so, I mean, it's just the most embarrassing part of Norwalk, I think, or of any city and probably in Connecticut, is that the DOT built that area, and then there's those great sidewalks that end like at Tavern Seven, where you're walking on a concrete sidewalk and then boom, you hit rock, you know, like it just stops. And, you know, it was never continuing. So I know they're milling and repaving some of the seven from the intersection with 33 South. They seem to be widening it or doing something there. I know there's a plan to do all this other work all the way down to Motor Vehicle and redo Grist Mill. The plans are in flux, you know, we, they're changing from year to year. But the biggest mistake DOT made, in my estimation, when they repaved or redesigned seven from 33 North and well into Wilton, and they expanded it up by Wilton High School, they put four lanes in, they made the lane, the travel lanes wide enough for interstate highways, and they left a three-foot shoulder. And it would have been the easiest thing and not cost anything to make the lanes 10 feet wide and put in bike lanes on both sides of the road. Why that didn't happen, who knows? Why the state does not do bike lanes on their state roads, nobody knows. We're the only state on the East Coast that doesn't. You can go to all of our surrounding states, or the DOTs are committed to biking infrastructure. But the engineers at our DOT seem to be stuck in the 1970s. I'm not afraid to insult them publicly in a meeting because I have had, you know, conflicts with them for years over, you know, just putting in a bike lane on the Struffelino Bridge took an act of Congress. So anyway, I want you to emphasize how important the biking infrastructure is going to be, if I can wrap this up, and other, you know, and just walking and just sidewalks to this entire environment, because this is one of the stupidest areas for walking or biking. It's all car oriented. It's from a century ago. And if we're going to have all stable traffic flow, we're definitely going to have to have the ability to walk and bike and reduce the car trips in here. Also want to just add that in the last meeting or two meetings ago, I brought up the fact that the parking for the train station, which you're providing some public parking in your negotiations with Metro North, I believe, or the DOT, that I would emphasize that that parking be reserved either wholly or certainly priority given to Norwalk residents, not to Wilton residents who might want to have a shorter train trip, but then add to the Route Seven traffic. I think this would be a great selling point for all the neighborhoods in Cranberry and Silvermine to know that they have first dibs at parking at this train station for people who, you know, need to commute. And I think commuting will return. It won't be the same as before the pandemic, but certainly the commuting patterns into the, in and out of the city are going to, are going to return in some form. But certainly, the commuting patterns into the, in and out of the city are gonna, are gonna return in some form. So I think property values of Norwalk property owners will be enhanced, knowing that we would have a state-of-the-art parking facility at a commuter train station in this location, not for other towns for Norwalk first.
And we're certainly happy to make that proposal to DOT. Obviously, we don't control the priority system, but we can certainly make that a suggestion, shall we say, as to the priorities that should be granted. I think that, you know, Commissioner Moushak, you raised an interesting point that I'd like to reinforce. And that is that what we're dealing with on the traffic and the improvements to traffic is something that has been in the making for decades now. When Merritt, when Route Seven and the expressway was put in, it ended at Grist Mill. And we all know the history behind that. But the bottom line is that it was never designed to end there. It just did end there. And they didn't put in sidewalks and they didn't do it in a way that was efficient. And they didn't do it in a way that allows for the best traffic flow to occur from there. They have plans and those plans are still under review to make the improvements that would allow for better traffic flow from the expressway through Grist Mill onto Main Avenue and not encouraging people to go through Silvermine and not encourage and not backing things up as much. And allowing for better access via pedestrians and bikes and everything else. But part of the problem, as we all know, is that it's existed for decades now. And so it's one of those things that the squeaky wheel is the one that gets the grease. And from their perspective, there's really, while it's not a great situation, it's also not one that they see as a high priority because it's working for better or for worse. One of the things that we think is going to happen with the approval of a master plan of this nature and the economic development that it supports, that can then be used with our connections with the state, with DSCD and what have you, is that it can then allow for pressure to be brought to bear on DOT to make this a priority to fix what should have been fixed decades ago.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts on this? Steve Kleppen, you good?
I just, I found the answer to Ms. Peniston's question. If, I'm sure Attorney Waters will double check our math. But I think in one of our initial staff reports, we had determined that there were 525 units that would be allowed under the current zoning.
Yeah, I don't believe that number is right, but I'll be happy to review it.
So can I ask for clarification, Fran?
Go ahead.
So you're saying the way it's currently zoned is 525? And with the zoning changes that they're asking for, it would go up to 1,300? Did I understand you correctly?
If the math that was in that initial memo is correct, that, yes, your understanding is correct.
Okay, so maybe Mr. Waters can clarify that when he gets back to us if he hasn't thinks differently. Is that the big difference in terms of density? But could we also speak of the density in terms of not just units, but projected residents per square mile compared with other neighborhoods?
Mary, I couldn't hear you, at least I couldn't hear you from the beginning. So what did you say?
From the beginning or the last thing I just said?
The last thing you just said.
The last thing I was asking is when we look at density, can we get information not in regard just to units? But could we get it in terms of projected population per square mile? Something that we can compare with other neighborhoods in Norwalk?
Is that a feasible thing? I mean, I don't, I don't know what that means exactly right now. What are we looking for?
Looking for increased population. How many people would be living in this area compared to other residential areas? So I'm trying to get a comparison of what the density would look like in this area that would be residential compared to other residential areas.
Maybe you could also compare it to West Avenue and the apartment buildings down there. Because what if all of these buildings don't go to office space and they all end up being residential?
That's what I was thinking exactly.
The density permitted in, or the density proposed is the same density permitted in the West Ave corridor and also South Norwalk.
Okay, do we, do you know what number that is, Steve?
It's one unit for every 500 square feet of lot area.
And what does one unit equal? Sorry to be so thick-headed.
That, that could be a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, a studio, a three-bedroom. We don't, we don't calculate it by bedrooms. It's just a unit.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer those questions? Are we still looking for something else?
Well, Madam Chairman, what I'll do is I will, we will work on the numbers and we'll provide you with our analysis and work with Steve and his staff on confirming things. And then that way you will have all of the information in front of you.
Okay, very good. So Steve, when that analysis comes in, I'm assuming, I don't know how many, you'll, sheets of paper, you'll email us that information?
Certainly.
Mr. Waters, I think from the beginning, a number of the members have been concerned about sort of the number of people. And perhaps you can even do it by building. Like if you anticipate building two-two to be all residential, what the numbers could be. Maybe you could make a graph because I don't feel like we've really gotten that information from you.
Sure, we, in, in all of this, we've, in the master plan, we've designated the number of units and the breakdown of units. But, and there would be an assumption as to how many people on average would be, for example, in a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit. But we can certainly provide that information, sure.
Great, thank you. I think a lot of people are very interested in that.
Yeah, the thing is, there's, there's a lot of information on the website. We can go through and through. So, Mr. Waters, when you're, think of it as, I don't know, more of an executive summary, if you will, so that, the quick look. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Fran?
Yeah.
On that note, these are all really good questions. I think the demographics of the curb might be helpful without, you know, revealing anyone's privacy. But just saying, okay, we have 20% empty nesters. We have, you know, if you can generalize like that. Because how many current families or people with children in the curb? The buildings that are open, you have two buildings fully open now, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think it would be helpful, I was gonna ask about Stanford, but honestly, the curb is really a microcosm of the demographics for this project. I think because it's right there and all of the factors are, it's actually kind of an interesting case study. So, you know, I've always felt there are a lot of, that aging in place or agent, or providing housing for seniors who want to stay in Norwalk but don't want to own a single-family home is what a lot of the housing we're building is providing for. But I've never actually seen any numbers of empty nesters. I know Waypoint has a lot of retirees and people that have downsized who they want to live in a more vibrant environment and not be stuck cleaning gutters and mowing lawns until they can't, you know. Well, it's just not, it's not an attractive lifestyle as much as it used to be back in the, in the 20th century. So that, those demographics, I think, would be helpful for us to just kind of get a snapshot of what might, this might look like.
Absolutely. Well, we'll do what we can as far as putting that information together. Just so you know, the curb, Building A, which was the first building, is 98% occupied, which is fully occupied because there's always people moving in and moving out. Building B, I believe, is about 75% occupied at this point. It's still leasing up. It only started leasing in February. But it's certainly doing what we would expect to as far as filling up. So we can get you all of that information as best we can.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else before we close this up? All right, here, Mr. Waters, thank you for your presentation and your patience in answering our questions here.
No, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, okay. All right, Steve Kleppen. Are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. We only have two items on the agenda, correct?
Right, the other, that technically the North Seven was two, two applications, but is really one item. And then the other one was the East Norwalk TOD plan.
Okay, so on the, on the TOD plan, what I want to do is, we had the two public hearings. I want to go around the table and get, if we have questions or if we have, you know, comments, where it's, it's with the, the Common Council Planning Committee, which I believe is gonna have all of the Common Council, and the chair is John Kites, I believe is meeting on the 10th. And then I think they're having a public hearing. I'm just giving you a sequence of events here. Then it comes back to us for a, I don't know what the comments are gonna be or changes or whatever the Common Council comes up with. Then it would come back to us for a, Steve Kleppen, is it, what did you call it? Implementation or acceptance or whatever? What did you, what's the word you used?
Yeah, so you'll have to have a formal adoption hearing at that stage.
So adoption hearing, meaning we're gonna adopt that plan if, how we go into the city's master plan, if you will. So tonight is gonna be discussion, if we have things that we are, talk about it, if there's, so it's with the Common Council right now. I mean, for them, but if we have any other suggestions or whatever, they will be forwarded to the Common Council by Steve Kleppen to, or the Planning Committee of the Common Council. So since, I'm gonna start with Brian Backsendale because he was on the, with this committee. And Brian, I'll have you open it up, okay?
Sure, we're going from North Seven to East Norwalk. East Norwalk's a delightful community, coastal community, as all of you know. When you look at it though, East Avenue is probably needs, together with the station area, which is mainly the center of the village there, it needs a little bit of tender loving care. The TOD, as a study, of course, is based on the theory that you should grow a little bit of density in proximity to the station so you can obviously ease the general commuting, ease traffic congestion, et cetera, around the station. At the moment, we're on, the major contention appears to be around two and a half building height and two, 3.5 building height. And I think the key here is, as we're doing this total development, is obviously features on increased public connectivity, pathways increases size, open space, buildings which have public access to them, atriums, et cetera. It's again about cycleways, pathways, cycylability, and improved traffic flow. On that though, if you look back at East Norwalk and East Avenue and the central station area there, it does need tender loving care. There's a lot of underutilized buildings, in many cases, some of them not utilized at all. For probably several decades, and Steve can mention what that is, we've had a two and a half story zoning and nothing much has happened. So the thought is for incorporating certain specific amenities in any development, they could go to three and a half stories. We already have quite a few three-story buildings in the East Norwalk central area, the TOD area, which is only half a mile from the station. Most of Windfield is around the three-story mark or three-story buildings themselves because they're former, I call them warehouse buildings, but they're actually commercial office buildings from probably 30 or 40 years ago. In these, to get that extra floor, you have to have a special permit. And that requires you do anything from, and you get certain points for this, for opening up and having a two-story atrium, having public access, public parking, green space, benches, all this to increase the community activity with, yes, commercial retail or office activity on the ground floor. In other words, open windows with increased screepscape capability. So all in all, it's a very well-thought-out plan, I believe, by the plant staff and by the Harriman, who've been excellent consultants. And the whole idea is to increase some density and some vibrancy around that East Africa, East Avenue, sorry, and that train station. And we only cover half-mile zone, it's pretty restricted, half-mile zone of the train station. So I'm very much for it. Already where I live, I don't think this has anything to do with TOD, but the streets, all the pavements have been paving, has been redone. The street, the walkscapes have been improved. We're just having the final laying of the, of the asphalt. That's gonna happen a lot more in this plan as people do some development near the Village Center. It's being described as a village center. There's very much a village feel to it as we have now. Any development has got to have the New England maritime feel to it, which is very important. This is why the design standards, which are being worked on, are so key to make sure these buildings are in perspective, are attractive, and have these amenities and thus don't look like anything we see, for example, Soho, which is different. Their warehouse and factory equivalents, nothing like that's gonna happen in East Norwalk. It's gonna have a maritime feel to it, a New England feel to it, and be in perspective. So I'm very much for it. And I think many, many residents I speak are for it. There's a certain organization, East Norwalk Residents' Neighborhood Association, has got some strong people who question certain areas, including the extra story and the implications of that. But it's very necessary if we want to have development in that area. And we get a lot of benefits for it. So that's my position, Fran. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Brian. All right, who wants to go next? Before I call on you like school?
Me?
Go ahead, Mike.
I support this plan because it represents opportunity that is not there now, especially the industrial zone. We had a person comment on the last meeting who owns a small design-build firm. And they said this extra story in the industrial zone would allow them to live, work, live and work at the same location. This is happening in smart progressive cities around the country. Live, work, and it allows for what's called boutique manufacturing. Artists that we might want to attract from the city or from surrounding cities in affordable residence slash workplaces, studios. All of that is what this plan encourages. I think that's really important. I do also think that the number of apartments is what a lot of people are hung up on. But that's maximum number of build-out. That's assuming that everything, every, all private owner maximizes that. That actually never really happens. So this would be a change over a long time. This is a good starting point. I also want to say that I live in a neighborhood that is much denser than anything that's proposed here on, because the proposal here is for 5% of the TOD district, which is actually ends up being about maybe 1% of East Norwalk, actually has a zone change recommended for it. This is not gonna change, you know, East Norwalk as we see it. It's gonna change a very small piece of it to make it more of a village feel, more walkable, more attractive to senior citizens who might want to retire there, so they can walk to the store, et cetera. Instead of getting in a car, they may not even want to own a car. And that, all of that is all good. But I want to just say that where I live in the Golden Hip, oh, sorry. Let me knock that off. Sorry. That's an answering machine, old-fashioned answering machine, sorry. That's an answering machine, old fashioned answering machine, sorry. What was I talking, hold on, sorry about that. I, I just pulled the plug. I don't think I'll ever plug it in again. The, where I live in Golden Hill in South Norwalk, we have dense projects in my neighborhood. I live in a B-zone, or I'm sorry, C-zone, which is two-family, and we're next to D-zone, which is multi-family. I have a couple of thousand apartment units within a couple of blocks of my house. We don't have gridlock. We don't have massive traffic jams. We have a stream of people walking to the train every morning. The, the nature of residential buildings is they don't all release their residents at once to clout, crowd the streets. A lot of people work at home, a lot of people don't commute, a lot of people try different things. So I, I do think that this impact of these number of units is not going to be the sky is falling, traffic jam, ruin East Norwalk scenario that some people are pushing. Certainly, people have concerns over change. I respect that. We all, we all do, you know, projects that came into my neighborhood, we were always watching them, but we have, if you look up Flax Hill, Taylor Avenue, Fairfield Avenue, literally thousands of apartment units on these streets that have not turned the neighborhood into this gridlock. We have housing opportunities for people at all levels of income. We live in, I live in a very diverse neighborhood that is racially, economically diverse, ethnically diverse. And I think that's an image of Norwalk that is a positive image. It's always been one of Norwalk's great strengths. This will help people, but, well, first of all, I want to say a city cannot stop building housing. You absolutely cannot stop building housing. You will make it unaffordable because we have a limited supply and with supply and demand, we have to continually grow if we're going to stay economically viable and attractive and also make jobs for people. So I do think, I do think all of the elements of this plan are, are well thought out and smart. I, I respect the people that are concerned about the impacts, but I just say, I'll just end saying that I am going to fully support this plan. I don't think this is going to make a change to East Norwalk except make it better. And I do not like getting off Exit 16. And my first image of East Norwalk is a battered Howard Johnson sign from 1964 that says cocktails on it, and it's got a tarp thrown over it. And that, that on a, on a wheat string lot, and that is, sets the tone for the rest of the East Norwalk stretch, this 5% of East Norwalk that we're talking about rezoning and turning it into something East Norwalkers can be proud of, gateway to the city and that all of the city could be proud of. So I think this is, I think this is good. And I'll just say that years ago, 10 years ago exactly, there was a petition in East Norwalk signed by 500 people. We do not want the bike lanes on Beach Road. They're going to destroy East Norwalk. They're going to create traffic jams. They're going to destroy our lives. And it's those people from outside our neighborhood that want the bike lanes. Even, even though the fact was it was people in Marvin Beach who were fighting for them so their kids could ride to the beach safely. Bike lanes went in finally, took a few years. And they've made the traffic go slower. They've made the, the bike lanes are busy. It was a huge improvement. All of the fears that were brought up did not get realized. And I just, a lot of the same people who were pushing the no bike lane petition, no change, this is going to wreck our lives are behind this. So I want to just say it was all exaggerated. It was all sky is falling. And this is really a well thought out, good plan. It'll make East Norwalk and Norwalk better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Who wants to go next?
I'll go next. Thanks, Fran. John?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I, I think the key to this whole project is the infrastructure. And if we get ahead of it instead of behind it, especially with the road and widening of the road, I understand that Metro North is going to replace the bridge, widen the underpass. You know, honestly, if we have a full two lanes each way and turn lanes, it's going to eliminate a lot of traffic. Coordinating the lights so that people can get in and out of the, the East Avenue area is going to help incredibly. I really think that the area now is really depressing. I, you know, my, my thoughts like, like Mike are that you get off the highway, you see the old Howard Johnsons and, and it kind of sets the tone. I like the fact that there's going to be more people there. There's going to be, there's going to be structures. There's going to be more population. I have two kids now that are commuting in and out of New York, and this is the kind of location they would love to live in. I could see them starting their families there. I could see them commuting in and out. As far as green space, I mean, my gosh, we have the beach just down the road. And a lot of these people that are going to be moving in are, are the kind of people that are riding bikes and walking and jogging. And there's plenty of people that are going to be walking, riding bikes and jogging down to the beach as opposed to driving their cars down there. I think it's really important that we use that area and utilize the train station that's there and build on that in order to bring more people into the area. I don't believe that bringing more people into the area, the density is going to increase the, the tax base. I think it's going to, to me, looking back at other projects, the tax base is paid by the developer, by each unit. There's not going to be kids in each unit. There's not going to be the need to increase the school and the population of the school. I think that it's going to be more of a millennial type of first timers that are, that are buying or renting, commuting, or young families that have young children before they buy that home in other areas of Norwalk if we have welcomed them into our community. I think it's a great project. I, I just really cannot stress enough that the infrastructure and allowing vehicles to come and go out of East Avenue around this project has to be done correctly. We have to think in the future, not in the past. I mean, look at 95. We, we all know we should have five lanes on either side. And at the time that they built it, it would have been pennies to increase the size of 95. Now, you know, it's incredibly expensive. We need to make sure the infrastructure is set up for the future and not try and chase what the needs are for the future. I like the project.
Okay. Okay, who's next? Steve Ferguson, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'd like to have the ladies go first because I am a gentleman, but since you called me out, I'll say something. I like the comments from Mike and John, particularly, I like the fact of the infrastructure planning ahead and, you know, I, I ride my bike from Newtown Avenue to the beach every day in the evening time. And it gets a little scary getting towards the bridge and knowing that the DOT is going to work on that area to widen the roads is very, very important for people to go in and out. I would like to have, if I had a crystal ball in the wish list, I would like to have a, a place that people could buy food, like a small grocery store of some sort in that, in that locale. So people could, you know, connect with the essentials for living, especially the elderly ones in East Norwalk. Those that've been, that've been invested into that area for many years should have a place to get the essential things like food and, and medical services. I know we have a lot on East Avenue, so I'm really happy with that. But more importantly, I would like for us to understand that Norwalk is not just one spot, you know, there's corridors and pockets that, that are very sustainable. And I want us to look at it holistically, not just with our emotions and feelings, but, you know, really how that place, East Norwalk and that corridor, namely with the East Norwalk Train Station, you know, also with 95, connecting these, these, these dry spots and making it useful for those who live there. And I just hope that we just think of practical ways to have it be used for many different ages, demographics, and, and businesses. You know, which we have done with the plan. So back to what Mike and John said, I'm all about infrastructure. Make sure people can get in and out of there safely.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
All right, who's next?
This is Tamara.
Go ahead, Tamara.
Tamara, okay. You know, I, I listened to the hearings on August 18th and 24th. And I heard the community speak of their problems with the traffic density, the increased population density and the height of the new structures. And I acknowledge that those are going to be issues with the community. My main problem with this plan is that it totally ignores the Hispanic and Black communities in this area. This is a large Hispanic and Black community from I-95 going down almost to Seaview Avenue. And I understand that it is a revitalization of East Norwalk. But my concern is long-term whether this will be a regentrification of East Norwalk. This plan may allow developers to slowly move out the Hispanic and Black residents to put up higher price rentals which they cannot afford. The proposed revitalized, revitalized community will be located within a train station, within walking distance to the beach with proposed shops and businesses. And it will be very marketable to affluent residents. But my question is, if that happens, it's going to start moving back to find new residential housing. And that means the Hispanics and the Blacks are going to have to move out of the community. I saw this in South Norwalk where Washington Village was demolished and with that, a community was gone. I looked at your citywide plan and I saw that on page 22, number 46, that it said that the plan is to make the region affordable for everyone, provide affordable housing for all incomes, ages, races and ethnicities, and to protect low-income residents from displacement. And I don't think that issue has been concerned, has been considered in this plan. I do support and I do feel that there is a need for the revitalization of East Avenue from I-95 to East Norwalk Train Station. But I do feel very strongly that not only haven't I heard the voices of the Hispanic and Blacks residents in that community, but I also have not heard the views of the small businesses in the industrial area between East Norwalk Train Station and Seaview Avenue. The East Norwalk Neighborhood TOD Plan states that one of the top action items is to rezone from commercial to residential. That would mean a number of these small businesses which operate in that area may not be able to afford another area in Norwalk. And they would have to leave the city to operate successfully. And Norwalk needs the small businesses. And I would like to have heard input from small businesses on this proposal. My concern is gentrification of this area where you're going to start to accommodate more to the middle class and the affluent and will displace the poor residents. I have not heard this addressed in the plan. And until I hear from the voices of Hispanics and Blacks and small businesses, I cannot support the plan.
Okay, Steve Kleppen, you want to address anything?
No, I would like to say something first. Steve, I'd like to say something first before Steve goes.
Go ahead.
Being that I'm Black, 100% Black. I, Tamara, like yourself, had those thoughts and concerns. I sat in on some of the public hearings that the public weighed in. And my objective was just knowing what everybody thought of it, you know, from Black, Hispanic, White, business owners and so forth, small business owners. And I met about 20 business owners in the area. Unfortunately, there was only one Black business owner that was there that was just moving out at the time. And I wanted, like you, to get some input. It was kind of hard for me to get that input. So I'm hoping if you can look into that more clearly or closely, maybe you can get closer than I could have gotten over the past, I would say, six months or so. Brian Backstebull was there on two of those occasions. Maybe he can shed some more light in on that since he was working closer with this TOD. And that's the best that I can say as far as that.
Just a response, Steve. The businesses are concerned because they are small businesses, whether they're owned by Blacks or Hispanics or Whites. They're going to be pushed out. It is more of an economic concern. The residential area is a concern which affects Hispanics and Blacks. And that, that is wary, where the ethnicity comes in. The small businesses is more about economics.
Okay.
Okay, Steve Kleppen?
Sure, I'm going to share my screen and pull up a map for you. We can talk it through. Can you see the, the PowerPoint slide up?
Yep.
Okay, so the village, so I'm going to address Tamara's comments, but, so the, the cursor is following the proposed village district. It's the orange hatch with the yellow outline to it. All those properties, except for these two right down here, are already zoned neighborhood business. So those are all commercial properties. None of those are, 98% of those are not residential. They're commercial. So there's commercial businesses in there now. We're not proposing to add residential out in the, excuse me, change these areas out here, which is all residential. We're not proposing any changes which would lead to gentrification in these areas out here. In fact, one of the improvements we recommended was in this area through here, which is in the Osborne Avenue area, which was a facade improvement program to, to hopefully keep that housing stock in place and not change it. So I think that that's an improvement. These areas through here, and another point, we're not trying to remove any businesses. The East Norwalk Business Association had a representative on our study committee, Judas Dominguez, who's Hispanic, who actually helped us with outreach to the Hispanic community through the whole process, handing out flyers and so forth. She was at all of our meetings and participated in the discussions on the plan. I don't want to speak for her, but I, I think it's safe to say she was in favor of what we're proposing. So we're not, anything along that corridor which runs through here, we're not proposing to remove any businesses. We are proposing to rezone some properties, but there's not going to be any businesses that we're trying to relocate or, or remove. So I'm not sure what that concern is based on. And as I mentioned, there's, there's no, this area really doesn't contain any residential now. So there's not going to be any displacement of anybody who's going to be living there unless somebody has an apartment that's above an existing business and that the owner chooses to redevelop their property.
Yeah, I'm talking about section five in your diagram. That's a residential area.
Right, and those are all proposed to become, no, actually, those, everything labeled number five is a commercial use that we're proposing to rezone to rent.
So where are the housings, where's the residential housing on your plan? And will they stay intact?
There, so this whole area, if you can see where I'm scrolling around, the orange dash, orange slash here, that's all currently zoned neighborhood business zone. That's all commercial property now. We're proposing to,
That's, that's, that's along East Avenue?
Correct. Those are commercial property or commercially zoned properties now. We're proposing to allow residential above the commercial. They have to maintain commercial on the ground floor, though.
There is some residential property on that, in that area?
There, there might be a couple of houses here and there, but most of it's commercial. It's usually like, there's a bunch of delis. You know, there's obviously the St. Thomas Church, but the majority of it's commercial.
You know, Steve, let, let me just tell you what my main, one of my concerns is the reach of this plan. As I said initially, I do agree that East Avenue needs to be revitalized. But upon agreement and support of this plan, does it give the developer, five years from now, the ability with the rezoning, the ability to start moving out residential housing and putting up apartments? Is it going to displace residents? And that's my concern. For four or five years from now, will it start to, the place For four or five years from now, will it start to displacing, displacing residents? As East Avenue grows and it becomes more attractive, will it start displacing the lower-income residents?
So that's a, that's a different question. So just the slide I have up here now, this is the whole study area. That's about five hundred acres. We're proposing to rezone about seven percent of that. So it's a pretty small amount. To your, to your questions, I think is a different question, is if, and I I understand what you're saying, is if this, say, these areas redevelop and those property values increase over time, does that, as a, is a repercussion of that, do the surrounding properties also increase in value, which could result in, say, if there's a renter there that has a unit that they can afford at the moment, but the landlord says my property is now worth more, I can charge more rent, and that tenant that's in there now can't afford that increase? That's a possibility that could happen. That could happen regardless of whether we work on this plan or not. But one thing to point out, as part of the proposed Village District, we are recommending that the affordability standards that we've adopted in South Norwalk and also on West Avenue, Wall Street, be included in this proposal. And those affordability standards are a lower threshold, which will help out more lower-income residents than currently is allowed.
How are they different, Steve? Could you say?
Sure, so right now, the 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 major change is in the South Norwalk and the West Ave areas, which is the SSDD zone and the CBD zone. And coincidentally, we've also recommended that change up for the North Seven area as well as part of this. So any, any residential, any project that has more than twelve residential units in it has to deed restrict a minimum of ten percent of those units. And there's two affordability thresholds. One is that if they choose to do eighty percent of the state median income, and I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, they have to also pay the city a one percent fee that goes to an Affordable Housing Fund. Or they can choose to do so at sixty percent state median income. And they don't have to pay the fee. And state median income is lower than area median income, which is usually the threshold, threshold which communities look at for affordability. Because obviously, our area median income includes Stanford, we're in the Stanford Norwalk metro area. So we have all the surrounding Wilton's, Westport area. So our median income is much higher than the overall state median income. Can I, can I ask something?
Now, hold on a second, Mike.
Okay.
Question for Tamara. So your statement when you said you cannot support this plan until you hear from the Black and Hispanic community. You know, we've had two public hearings, so what what does that mean?
Well, your public hearings were basically voices from the, I would say, the homeowners. And I know we're under a time of COVID, but I still would like to hear either from the owners of homes in this area towards the, towards the right, as you're coming from I ninety-five, towards the right-hand side. Because I drive that area every day, the right-hand side of East Norwalk. There are a large number of Hispanic and Black residents in that area. And I'm hearing the voices from the last two hearings of homeowners, which is like north of East Avenue. But it is, when you go towards this side, that you, there is just a variety of not only ownership, but rental, businesses, industrial. It's just a different community than it is north of East Avenue. And I didn't hear that voice on the eighteenth and the twenty-fourth. I heard voices of people who own homes and speaking of traffic density, increased population, and the height of the structure. And I think those are valid concerns if you own a home in that area. But I would also like to know, these people on, the residents on the other side, what are their concerns? And I'm just saying, I didn't hear it on the eighteenth and the twenty-fourth.
Well, I would just like, who's this? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so our, as part of our outreach, what we did was, we did, you know, some of the conventional things that you typically do with any kind of project like this. But, you know, actually, Diane Cece had a really good idea that we employed several times, that we use the cities, you've probably seen them, when like a bridge is closed, they have those portable signs that DPW carries behind the truck. And they have their, on the electronic billboards where we advertise our meeting dates and times. We also handed out business cards with meeting dates and times at train stations. We put up flyers in English and in Spanish at pretty much every business in and around that area. We utilize the cities, the City Board of Ed system called Peachjar, which sends out a email to every, to everybody that signs up for that system. So we put our flyers in that, so the parents that are on that notification system got those. We utilize social media. We also had articles in the paper through, in both the Norwalk Hour and Nancy on Norwalk, you know, advertising our events and publicizing them. You know, when we had a hearings, we we sent out legal notices and published our agendas. So, I mean, I think for the outreach that we went above and beyond, one thing, I think overall, which is very difficult, and I think we need to think about it a little differently going forward, is trying to reach the Hispanic community a little more. When we had one of these hearings, and this was way before COVID, there was a Hispanic woman that came in our office, just getting a permit for something. And we had the flyer posted there, the office, and she she indicated that the only way to really get a good turnout is to actually go to the Hispanic community when they're having an event and then reach them. So the next time around, when we do one of these things, we're gonna have to try doing that as well.
Just one more comment, Steve. I understand you reached out through social media and through Zoom, but these are communities that may not have access to that. And my concern is this, if they don't have access and they don't understand the long term, they're just living from, they're just trying to make a living and live daily. I do think the, one of the objectives of this commission should be to also look out at the interests of those who don't have a voice, of those who may have a long-term interest in this plan but may not have the ability to voice their interest or may not even have the ability to see how this plan would affect them. So I I do feel very strongly that we should look at how we can protect the voices, how we can protect those who may eventually be displaced through regentrification very quickly. Regentrification can happen very, very quickly. And how they can be protected in this plan that you proposed.
Yeah, then that's a fair point. One of the things, not to go off on a side note, but one of the things that my office is gonna be working on over the next year, as time permits, is as a formalized communication plans for outreach. So we're gonna, we started talking about it, but we haven't gotten too far. One thing, just to let you a little bit of notice on the the makeup of the Oversight Committee that worked on this. So what we did was, we had the, you know, Brian was your representative from the Planning Commission. There was a representative from the Zoning Commission, representative from Common Council, who was in that area. We had a representative from the Third Taxing District, from the East Norwalk Business Association and then East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Just, and also Public Works, to get a as broad a net as possible of the various interest groups in the area. You know, and it's hard to capture every segment, but I thought we tried to put out as wide a net as possible.
Okay, Mike Mushak, sorry?
That's okay. Tamara brings up really good points. And I'm just gonna say that there's often been at our meetings, at a hearings, homeowners, many of them actually say they are taxpayers. They call themselves taxpayers. But they will not, they actually believe, as much as I try to correct them, that renters are not taxpayers. And it turns out, we're on a square foot basis, renters pay more taxes at all income levels than homeowners. And they cost, and services. So the renters are actually subsidizing the single-family homeowners when you actually run the numbers. And so the, so the the idea that, I mean, in some cases, people even demonize renters as something to be feared or whatever. But this is a, you know, I'm always like, well, who are the people that, you know, are working in jobs that are not paying a lot, but they run our economy? These folks are the people, these are the bread and butter, these are the people that run the, our economy. I mean, there are people that may not be in white-collar jobs, but they are doing a lot of the jobs that are really important and keep us functioning. So the, and that's, that's a really good point. And I, and you brought up a good point about small businesses being driven out in the, like in the industrial zone. And Steve, I wanted to ask you, can you clarify for Tamara and the rest of us? The, the idea that the industrial zone in this plan has allowed residential with an extra story, but that are the small businesses on the first floor in general protected? Or are we allowing possible, you know, the kicking out of small businesses?
No, so the the residential can only be permitted above the ground floor commercial. So they couldn't take an industrial zone property and develop it solely for residential purposes.
That's an important point, and I hope that is, you know, does bring some clarity. Because I do think a lot of the small business owners, I would, don't know this for a fact, but I would assume, may be struggling. This was brought up by someone in the public hearing. A lot of small business owners are struggling, certainly in the pandemic. But in general, it's hard to run a small business. I'm a small business owner, and, you know, it's not the easiest thing in the world to, you know, do. You have to have a lot of worries, and sometimes I worry about paying my bills. So the, but these small businesses, the zone change could help them incentivize or make their property more valuable so they could actually have an income, like a two-income, like an income upstairs that they could rent out that would help subsidize their business. Is that, is that accurate, Steve? Is that, because I think that was what what the consultant had suggested.
That's the intent.
Okay. So anyway, that is a great discussion, really good discussion.
All right, Mary Peniston?
Yes, I'm glad that Tamara brought those things up. But I guess I feel like that there should be the ability for people that are already in that community not to lose their stake in that community. But I don't want to stop a positive plan and that they can't enjoy it. So taking into account, I would be curious about, do we have good protections to make sure that it doesn't get over gentrified? But I, overall, I do think that the plan has been very thoughtful. I too have concerns about the traffic, although some of it, I feel like is sort of out of the control of this plan, just because of the nature of people cutting through, et cetera. But clearly, that has to be redone. And if the neighborhood is revitalized, I would like for a diverse community to be able to enjoy it. I don't want to not revitalize the community because we're worried about lower-income folks not being able to stay. I would rather take the tactic of finding about what options do we have of keeping it as an economically diverse and ethnically diverse community. And I don't know what options, which is why I was asking about the questions of the affordability. It, I can ask those offline, but it doesn't sound that much different than what we have in place for all of Norwalk, unless those two sub clauses you were talking about with the eighty percent and the sixty percent are different for some of the areas. But I think it would be interesting to see what other things we could explore to be able to maintain some other stakeholders that are already entrenched in the community, either as small businesses or as renters that could get pushed out by gentrification. In what ways could they also enjoy the benefits of the improvements in the community? But I do feel like rather than not improving it, I would rather feel like, how can we do this so that they could benefit too? And I don't know what the answer is to those questions. And if there's going to be other stages in the process, perhaps we could find more creative ways to get input. But I think overall, I do think it would be healthy for the overall health of the community for these improvements to go in. But I do like the notion of making sure that we're taking into account all the current residents.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Steve, anything you want to add to that or just move on?
No, I'm okay. Thanks.
All right, Tammy Langalis?
Yep, thank you. I listened to the residents that were participating on the Zoom calls, and I feel like there were sort of two groups. One group that really basically wanted a supermarket and, you know, maybe some little improvements, but they didn't really want to change their neighborhood at all. They were afraid of widening East Avenue. They were afraid of any increase in population. And, but yet, they did participate in the the past two years, all the different meetings and the question groups, you know, question, Q and A groups. And I think maybe they misunderstood what the TOD was all about. And in order to entice you, if you will, developers to come in and invest in the area, it is important that we get the infrastructure right. A lot of people talked about tractor-trailers going down East Avenue now. That was a big concern on Rowayton Avenue when they lowered the train bridge years ago. And I will say, it didn't happen because there wasn't any pla, any new places for tractor-trailer trucks to go. So if there is a supermarket over there, south of the train tracks, maybe a tractor-trailer truck will have to go there. But I think those concerns, I mean, they're real, but they didn't necessarily pan out in other parts of town. And eliminating the traffic and making it more pedestrian-friendly for people to get to the train station is important. How can you have a train station with only a little sidewalk on one side of the street and no ability to cross to get to the entrance to the inbound side? I mean, that's kind of crazy. So those infrastructure things, like a lot of other people have spoken about, I think are really important. And if there is improved business along East Avenue, all stakeholders that live on either side of East Avenue, the north side or the south side, will benefit. And I think Steve's facade improvements are really a good suggestion. We've seen that work on some of the side streets in South Norwalk, like Camford Street. And to make those rental houses more attractive and have the people that own them, they might not live in the building, but have them improve those buildings. And so overall, I think a lot of work has gone into this project. It's been going on since 2018. And I think that the Planning and Zoning Department did try to reach out. It's very difficult to get every single stakeholder. Some people are very interested. That's always the eighty-twenty rule, but there are plenty of people that probably are not that interested in it. But I think overall, P and Z did a good job of reaching out to people. So I support the project, and I think the scope of what's happening on East Avenue is impactful enough, but it's not too big. And I like that it's just sort of right along that corridor there from ninety-five down to the bottom of the cemetery. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My turn, I haven't gone. So I live in East Norwalk, and I've been struggling with this plan, putting different hats on. I've driven around. I see the traffic. I also went with the flow of traffic, just to see where the flow was going. So you got the traffic coming in from, you know, it's commuter. When it's that time, you you just, it's a gridlock. You know, it comes through here, some's going to ninety-five. And then I went with the flow the other way, and it goes through Westport and beyond. I've driven around. I've had, and I, and I've discussed some of this with with Steve Kleppen. You know, the Avalon project by the, by the post office was gonna be the savior of Wall Street. It was gonna bring lots of people and. going to bring lots of people, and walkability, all those words, and that didn't happen. West Avenue, streets are empty. You can drive there, and I've driven it to see evenings, you know, nighttime, you know, early evening, what's going on, and, you know, there's the issues of the restaurants being enclosed, you know, not in the streetscape, and so that's not helping any. So I've had those worries as I looked at the plan for East Norwalk, but, and everybody, and I don't know where everybody lives, but I know Mike, Mike can eloquently talk about South Norwalk. You know, if you talk to anybody from Cranberry, they can talk about Cranberry. All due respect to Rowayton, Tammy, people will say they're from Rowayton and not from Norwalk. So even though we're one big city, there are these segments, like East Norwalk, and some things are, there are intangibles, I'll say, at each, you know, the city is in districts, you know, and from, we're going way back. So there, and every district has its charm, you know, has its pluses and minuses. So I go down East Avenue all the time, I look at things, and I've tried to envision three-and-a-half-story buildings by the train over there on this side, across from St. Thomas Church. Then I see that the, you know, right around the third taxing district uses that little park area, then we have the area that was burnt out, which is now, you know, looks better, but it's not, nothing's happened over there. There's that senior, the senior housing over there, which I think is three stories high, and so I've tried to take all of this into consideration. And this plan has, the word is not restriction, has, help me out, Steve, it's got guidelines, if you will, that what's happening on West Avenue and what's happened will not happen here. There's certain, there's design, design panel, I guess, will be our design review. As far as village district, or the other half of village, the other half of West East Avenue is zoned village district, all right? So from 95, from the bridge on down the other end, is already zoned village district. So hearing the residents, not that we don't hear, you know, it's, you know, we hear the parking issues, and we're trying to juggle everything with an eye on what's, you know, what's good for the city. So I said, I've struggled with it. I've asked neighbors, you know, if they knew anything about this stuff, they don't know anything. And they weren't too interested. Off the cuff, they say, well, why are we doing that? But nobody's been interested enough to call in, you know, to the public hearings or attend any of those other meetings and stuff. So I've taken all that into consideration, and there are, what's the word, not guidelines, but there's, there's things in the plan that will prohibit what's going on at the other areas that I mentioned before. Now, what we heard from the residents was the, was density, right? Density was an issue, and the height was an issue. Now, density in the village district, it's what, about 700 units if all fully come online? And I want to make clear that I'm saying this right. And then there's the, there's the industrial zone area, which is, Steve, help me out here, it's about what, 600 more units?
Correct.
Okay, so we have, if fully utilized on the village district, which is East Avenue, it's 700 units if all came to play, and then there's 600 units on the industrial zone side. Okay? So I can see people getting, you know, thinking of the number alone and going crazy. Now, I wasn't happy with those renditions that were in the plan, because, you know, people say, well, they're just renditions now, like the Winfield and East Avenue. I like to see pictures that are real, meaning put some reality to it. Just as an aside, I'm only going to mention as a side, 93 Winfield, it's got everything else flattened out, and only that property standing up, it looks like, I don't know what it looks like. And Winfield and East Avenue, you know, they got those buildings on both sides, you know, no gas station, whatever. I would have much preferred some renderings, if you will, with some real, you know, take a Google shot there and superimpose something, or whatever, more realistic to what exists there. So I don't know if there is a compromise to make, if there is, Steve, I think you've got some charts on industrial zone, the other zone, is there anything that we should take off the table? Meaning, you know, there's 700 units on the village district, 600 units on the industrial side. If, I know the consultants say you'll never realize all that, and we don't, right? There are property owners, there are property rights, and it's not, all due respect, Tamara, there's not people just coming in and cleaning out apartments or whatever, you know, what goes down five years or whatever, you know? We don't know what's happened with the spend, we don't know what's happening, you know, next day here. So, Steve, why don't you put up some charts there, just go over the two areas again?
Sure. Okay, so I just go back to the map, because it's probably easier to talk to the map than anything else. So, again, the orange hatch area with the yellow outline is the proposed village district, which is currently the neighborhood business zone. I'll try to zoom in a little more, maybe blow it up. And the area with the blue outline, it's a little thinner of a line, which is this line here. That's the industrial one zone, which runs along, you know, for the most part, runs along the railroad track. So in the village district, and this is more of a mathematical exercise and a planning exercise, if that was just simply taking that area and dividing it by the maximum density, somebody could realize if it was fully developed, would add, and I think it's like 730 units. The consultant thinks half of that is probably a more realistic number, and there's some reasons to that. You know, one of the big reasons is that there is, you know, fragmented ownership, you know, you can contrast, you know, it's kind of interesting, the North Seven application, it's the same number of units if you add the two together, surely, if you're talking about 1,300 and 1,300. Big differences is, that's basically going to be one consolidated parcel when it's done, where here you have probably 50 parcels with 50 ownership groups. So getting everybody together on the same page is a little different. Plus, these parcels are, for the most part, a lot smaller, and they're divided by East Avenue, so they're going to be narrower in width. So it's going to take compromise and cooperation and more creativity to get more density, and will lead to better designs and better projects throughout that. The industrial one zone, again, is the blue area, the blue outline. If you allow the residential units above the ground floor commercial in that area, that could net about 600 more units. And again, all these projects have to come forward, and they all have to be able to park themselves, and, but what I mean, when I say that, that's kind of planning and zoning jargon, is they have to be able to provide the required parking on their property or through any other mechanism that's allowed in the zoning regulations. They have to be able to do that. Each project is going to have to, you know, definitely a significant project has to stand on its own in terms of the traffic impacts. Attorney Waters had mentioned something, I think, which is a significant difference between that area and this area, is they, you know, right now, the levels of service up in the Merit Seven area function at a level of service F, which is the lowest you can have, meaning that there's, you know, near gridlock conditions at times, and anybody who's driven up there at rush hour can understand what that is. So for, in order for them to proceed with any realistic development, those levels of service have to improve, or they have to be able to do something to improve those levels of service. Through this corridor, you know, there are some areas that function at a level of service C, which is not great, but it's still an acceptable level of service for traffic engineering purposes, even level of service D is acceptable, but it's not something that you want to strive for by any stretch. So each project that comes forward in this area is going to have to submit its own traffic study, and if they can't show that they're not, at the very least, causing, not causing a decrease in the level of service, then it can stand. Also, keep in mind that the city will be conducting our own independent peer review of each one of those traffic analysis that's done, so that's a city consultant that will be reviewing that. I hope that answers it in a kind of roundabout way.
Now, can they, I think there's, we have in the city that people can, they don't have the parking, they can pay for in lieu of parking or parking off-site or something, we're not going to have any of that, right?
That's not currently part of the zoning for this area. That's in other, I think in South Norwalk and then Wall Street area.
Right.
Is this for restaurants?
I heard something about restaurants, I didn't catch the whole thing, sorry.
Isn't that in lieu of parking just for restaurant establishment?
No, there's the ability to pay for parking if you don't have it. So say you needed, you know, the code required, excuse me, 30 spaces, and you can only provide 20, you can pay for those additional 10 spaces, and the city puts that money into a fund that's used to either build more parking or upkeep designated parking, but that's not part of a proposal for this area.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead.
You know, the issue that Tamara brought up is really important, and I'm looking at the zoning, because that is a really diverse neighborhood to, at the Osborne Avenue stretch, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of small businesses in there and a lot of two families. Now, that is a C-zone, that's a two-family zone. And across East Avenue, on the other side of East, on the east side of East Avenue, if we're looking at this chart that Steve has up, it'd be on the right side, that's B-zone, because I have the zoning map in front of me. And then, East Norwalk, south of the cemetery is a B-zone, and, or I'm sorry, C-zone, and then Marvin Beach, as you get further out to the beach, is B. So those are, I live in a C-zone, and Tamara, it's important for me to express to you what has happened in our neighborhood in Golden Hill, we're in a C-zone. And the D-zone, which is the multifamily, is right next to us on Fairfield and Taylor. There had been development in the 1980s, like condo complexes and stuff that happened. Some of them are actually low-income, they're redevelopment agency, low-income projects like Ben Franklin Gardens on Flax Hill, that's, you know, deed-restricted affordable housing. But one thing that's happened with the, you know, like the improvements in South Norwalk, yes, some people were pushed out. Washington Village, the Housing Authority insists that more than half are back in, and another half or another third might come back. A lot of them got vouchers to move, some of them did move out of town, but a lot of them moved to other parts of town. But I checked with that, because there's this, I've been hearing that, you know, the Washington Village population was pushed out by the, you know, by the redevelopment, the HUD project. And so, but there's certainly been a lot of development in South Norwalk, and you could look at Washington Street itself as a prime example of gentrification. There was a time when there were all low-income people living there, back in the 1970s, and that's what Bobby Burgess and a lot of community activists were, you know, fighting to protect, but they were also understanding the need for redevelopment. But in our neighborhood, which is right on the edge of South Norwalk, we're part of South Norwalk, but we're, you know, we're a lower-density area, just, you know, adjoining the downtown South Norwalk. We haven't seen the gentrification that you might expect or that you might fear is what happened to these neighborhoods next, around the East Norwalk or the East Avenue corridor. In our neighborhood, I have Section Eight housing across the street, next door. We have a lot of folks in Section Eight housing, we all look out for each other, it's not, there's no judgment, we know we have Section Eight housing, we have a very diverse community. We have, we've seen, like, I fixed up a property, we have neighbors who fixed them up and fixed up the apartments, and they're charging more rent, for sure, but we've had a lot of homeowners, we have a lot of Haitians in our neighborhood, who have bought houses and fixed them up, and they're the multifamilies, and they use them as income properties, but they haven't been pushed out. They're actually monetizing, we have a lot of Latinos, we have Ecuadorians, a lot of Colombians, a lot of Puerto Ricans, I mean, they're, you know, it's a very diverse community. We're always, we always wanted, the reason why we moved here was because we said we didn't want to live in Rowayton, with all due respect, we love Rowayton, but it's not, it doesn't have the diversity that South Norwalk has or that this neighborhood has, and we will never become, we're hoping, never become Rowayton. We want to be, we want to maintain that diversity. And in all the 15 years that I've lived here, I haven't seen people pushed out. I have seen, I have seen properties be renovated, but I haven't seen like a mass exodus of lower-income folks, and again, most of my neighbors are lower-income. So that, that concern is really valid, I mean, and when you say you don't hear from the voices from the lower-income folks in the minority community, that's absolutely valid. We've had that issue in our own neighborhood association, where we try to reach out to a lot of the minority residents, our minority neighbors, and a lot of people just, for whatever reason, or I think it's just because they're all working so hard, and, you know, they're struggling, that they don't have time to go to a meeting, they don't have the luxury of going to a meeting at night, they've got kids to watch, they can't afford a babysitter, or whatever. But, but our neighborhood has not been gentrified to the degree that you might expect with what's happened in South Norwalk over the last 30 years. It's actually become a haven for affordable housing, which is one of the things that drew us here. So I hope that offers some, may not change your mind about the plan, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just trying to say that this diversity and this minority community hopefully will not be gentrified, and with this zoning restrictions, you can't build multifamily housing in my, in our neighborhood. Right on the edges where it's D, you can, but in B and C, you cannot. It's just impossible for a developer to assemble properties and then ask, you know, and ask for zone change, it's not, it's not done, it doesn't happen, I can't even remember when that might have happened, where a higher-density project went into what was a B or a C. And so hopefully, these communities will be protected by the zoning, the very zoning that we're using to try to incentivize other improvements. That's all I, I'll stop talking.
And may I add something?
Yep, go ahead.
On the previous slide that Steve put up, there was a number two, which is the Osborne area, and one of the things called out very clearly in the plan is this must be preserved as an affordable housing area, whether it's B, D, or C. That was the key, very key, and the affordability for any new grouping of houses, oh, sorry, grouping of apartments, was very, is called out very clearly, because affordable housing is very key to East Norwalk, is a key to our growth. As a city, we're very diverse, and East Norwalk is very diverse, and when you go south of the cemetery area, Cove Avenue, the First Avenue, is a great mix of people. They're not going to be impacted, not by Todd, except in the sense that this will be a little bit more vitality around the actual train station. Air lines are going to go on, and hopefully just be enriched by the whole vibrancy of the center of East Norwalk and the ease of East Avenue being revised and traffic congestion reduced. So affordability is a very key piece, clearly with, as Steve has said, if there is a major increase in value of property, is that going to have impacts elsewhere? Not if we protect it, in my opinion, the affordability, and particularly the area we see you had up on his map as two, which was a very key. was two, which was a very key strategic element of our Todd Development Plan, the preservation of the affordable housing area. I don't know if that, that's just background, anyway. I don't know, you want to comment, Steve?
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm okay, thank you, though.
All right, so we all had our say and our thoughts and whatever. And it might not be a perfect plan, it might not be, it won't be a perfect plan for everybody, but I, I do support it to go forward. Okay, so where we are right now is it's with the planning committee of the Common Council. They will have a public hearing. And then it will come back to us, don't know what will come out of the, of the Common Council, and then we'll take it from there. Is there anything else to address?
Fran, could I ask a clarification about Brian's comments? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, go ahead.
Brian, I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little bit for me, maybe it was my internet connection, but you were talking about the affordability protections. Were they other than the ones that Steve was speaking about? I'm not sure I understood what were the mechanisms for protection of affordability. Could you just, would you just elaborate on that?
I was basically re-stating Steve's point, because I think he was important. And if you go to that Osborne area, which is called out as item two on the zoning map, which basically, that was highlighted as preserving that as an affordable housing area with the very form and style it has today. That was called out, it wasn't looked over. It was called out, which I think is very specific. It may give some minor reassurance to Tamara, but I don't know. But we're very aware that this whole area is very diverse, as the area I live in is very diverse, which is south of the cemetery.
Thank you.
All right, Steve Clippin, you got some other charts up?
No, I just wanted to show that area again. So yeah, just to clarify, the, the area that's labeled number two, and it's not, you know, it's, we don't have it boxed in with any specific properties, but that general area, it, you know, we kind of felt that it functions as de facto affordable housing, even though it's not deed restricted housing. And, and we spoke with Todd Bryant from, that's heavily involved in the Norwalk preservation discussions in the city. You know, and the area is not listed historically, so it's not like in that genre, but it's worthy of saving and protecting. So that's why we recommend the city explore a facade improvement program similar to what's done in South Norwalk. And that could be a way to help keep those buildings where they are, as opposed to seeing tear downs, which you saw across the street on a couple of different areas where the, you know, the old houses were turned down and they were able to squeeze another lot out of there. And, you know, it changes the character of that. And then obviously, any new unit that goes in is going to probably demand a higher rent than you get within an older building.
Okay, there anything else before we adjourn? All right, there's nothing else on the agenda, right, Steve Clippin?
There are a couple of housekeeping type items, that's about it.
Go ahead.
Just a quick update, and Tammy, please chime in if you have any comments. The industrial zones committee is actually meeting tomorrow for the first time. So that's, that's really the update in a nutshell.
Okay. And Tammy Langgallis is the planning commission's representative on the, on the industrial zone study.
So excited to get started, I thought the meeting was today, it's actually tomorrow.
Right, carry that excitement over for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Okay.
Tammy, I mean Fran. The full, I watched the full moon rise out my window at 7:38. And, and I was hiding my hands because the hair started growing on my hands, so I was keeping, that's why I was keeping my hands down. Anyway, if you've all started to feel a little weird tonight, it's because of the full moon. Just thought I'd throw that out there.
For that werewolf update. Okay, anything else, Steve Clippin?
No, minutes is the only other action you need to take care of.
No, I didn't, I didn't read the minutes from last week. So we're going to move, move the minutes over.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, if I'm not hearing anything else, I'm going to Mike Muschak for the motion.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good discussion.
Thank you, be safe, guys.